I called to order the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council for Tuesday, May 29th. Stand for the Puzz Allegiance.
The Puzz Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for the invitation.
Our dear God and our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet and to make decisions that affect many people, and we ask, dear God, that you give these people wisdom to make those decisions. And Lord, give them a peaceful meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the meeting as they are written for May 14th and the 17th.
I've got a correction on the second page of the 14th minute meetings. At the start of the public hearing, the Red Rooster parcel is owned by TDC. It's printed in there as TCD, but I didn't find anything else. I make a motion to approve as amended.
Second and.
My first and second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda as it is written?
I do have a few additions, which I have printed in front of you. Under 10F, we have Reiner, change order number two. Then under resolutions, 12C, also change order number two for Reiner. And then 12D, we have a work change order number seven for, work change directive number seven for Dunick's, and that was for State Street. That, I believe, is all I have.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
My first and second. My first and second, a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any, identify any conflict of interest for anybody tonight? Anybody from the public would like to talk about something that is not on the agenda? Carrying none, we will move on to reports. Jason, you might go.
Yeah, my numbers for the month. Talked about doing the audit for body cameras, the meat state statute that was done for the first time here. You have a copy of the report. And nuisance ordinance was done. There were 63 public nuisance ordinance warnings handed out. There'll be a couple more coming out in June. Citations will be issued in June for those that didn't correct the matter from March or May. That's all I have for you tonight. Any questions on any of that?
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Is it illegal to ride a skateboard in Swift Lake on the bike trail? Okay. Somebody told me they were told it was illegal to ride there, and I thought that's crazy because it's a perfect place to ride it.
Downtown it is.
Downtown, in downtown area. And we've had problems in the past with skateboarders doing things like putting large amounts of wax on steps, stuff like that, that creates a hazard because then the wax gets wet when it rains and people slip. The bank, we've had problems with skateboarders at the bank, problems right up here in front of City Hall, waxing up the steps, but no, Swift Lake Park should be fine as long as they're not, as long as they're not doing things to, like, they're doing the tricks off the picnic tables or something like that, it's going to cause armed city property. I can't believe anybody would tell them not to be doing that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Can we ask a question about that report? The audit report was, that was done by the chairman of the commission. Were we supposed to meet his commission, or is he certified separately to certify that audit for the cameras?
The, he, I have proposed to him to do the audit. He did the audit. The state doesn't have any guidelines as to who, it just says it has to be independent.
Okay, well, that was my question because it was done by the chairman of the police commission, and we were not informed on what we did we need about it, so that's my question.
Well, I just needed an independent person, so I asked him to do it, and he volunteered to do it.
Okay. I'm just wondering if that isn't a problem in that we did not meet his commission to do that, that he is the chairman of the commission? Maybe a question for Matt.
Okay, we don't have any other. Oh, Val, sorry, I didn't see you back there.
We have good news, too. We have finally gotten our grant agreement signed, so we can officially now say we have received a grant from the Minnesota Department of Education Library Construction Grant, so that's great news. Before we can move forward on anything else, we need to get that asbestos removed from the pipes. And I was really hoping to get that done before school got out because I thought we were going to have to close for a couple days, and I really don't like to close in the summer when we have kids who count on us to be open for them every day. But when I called, he said he didn't, wasn't able to get us in, but he doesn't think that we'll have to close now. He thinks he can just seal it off. So I said, well, as long as I don't have to close in the summer, you can do it whenever you want. So we're looking at July at this point, and then we'll be able to go from there. And I think it'll be good, you know, with the new administrator coming into wait to do the construction rather than have it all take place as, you know, we're in a transition period to just have one person on that. So, other than that, our summer reading program has started, and we have some, a lot of events coming up, so, any questions?
Yeah, good job, Jill.
All right, thank you.
Jeffrey?
I just want you to know I'm going to quit riding my skateboard from now on.
All time.
Downtown.
Downtown. Yeah, like my knees would handle that. A couple of things, kind of going right along with Chief Lickety and what he was talking about, and I asked him if I could be a part of that and help that because he had sent out those 63 or I think 62 letters. I'd like to get those addresses from him and bring them to the planning commission and help out with that a little bit and just go along with that. As of this week, we're going to be writing out our first check for the demo loan program with two more people that have, want to apply for the demo loan program, which is where somebody would come in, ask for some, 75% of the amount of money that they would need to tear down a dilapidated house so we can make the city of Tracy look better. Going right along with that, I can tell you that the EDA is very close to buying a house here in town or a property that when you drive into town from one of the directions makes the town look horrible. And that will be, I'm hoping, bought and taken care of over the next, the next week, I think, is, all the paperwork is done, and now we just need the current owner of that property to sign off on it. And it was bought for a good price. Now, there is a lot of back taxes. I've talked to Shane about this a little bit. There's back taxes that the EDA will have to pay on it, and there's also a, some utility bills that were from Shane, what was it, two or three years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, that will have to, that I might address the council in two weeks about, you know, maybe just since it's coming out of the general, not the general fund, but the EDA reserve fund, that maybe the city and the EDA could share that, those a little bit, but I'll bring that up at the next meeting. So if we can get that taken care of, the EDA has already signed off on that for me to buy that property, and then actually, then we will get bids to tear it down and make it look nice. And who knows, there's no solid plans on developing that area, but that could come in the real near future, too. So just making everything look good around here. But other than that, I've got the rest of the update as in your packet. Any questions?
Thank you.
Except for the kind of skateboard that I ride.
We'll need the license plate.
License number.
Make sure when you see this old lady with a walker walking on that bike, you don't get me. Okay?
Well, I kind of got a bunch of random stuff on my report. I guess the biggest thing, obviously, I'm going to say I'm going to bring that up later in the meeting, but the ban shell's done, painted. There is one little spot on the outside we're going to try to find some matching paint for it that's been done quite a few years ago to touch up before the tornado memorial day happens. Other than that, I have not much other than, I guess I'd like the public to be aware that grass clippings don't belong in the roads. You've seen a lot of this, seems like every year about this time we see a lot of it, but make sure you're blowing your first couple rows into your yard so that doesn't plug up the storm sewers. Other than that, do you have any questions on my report as it's written?
Chris, do you want to do the update?
Yeah. So there was a memo included in the packet about phase, we're calling 3A, which is the Third Street from Craig to South, and then essentially a block in each direction, east and west, generally speaking. So we submitted the PER for that in February and then submitted another revised version, which is some supplemental information in March. And we haven't received comments back yet from rural development, and I've been kind of just calling them, set a reminder for myself every couple weeks to kind of call and harass them and see where they're at. And this last time, they basically said, based on recent projects we've had with you, we expect an expedited or streamlined review process. So because of that, they're not making it a high priority on their review side because they have until the end of July to obligate all the funds that they need to obligate for all projects in the state. So they're prioritizing some other projects that they feel there'll probably be a few more iterations of the PER because they want, they want to get those comments back to those cities so they can get working on the revisions, and they feel like they won't have as much of that back and forth with this one, which, yeah, I mean, it's a nice feeling to know that, but also, you know, we're not going to get comments till later, we won't get funding obligated till later, so that will leave us less time on, less time on the back end to be doing our survey and design and getting things ready for construction in 2019. So those first couple of paragraphs just kind of discuss that, and what we did in February, council authorized approximately $75,000 of work that included some of our time to get going on the survey, and then some geotechnical investigations with soil borings, and then also the televising of sanitary services, which is underway. Sounds like they're going to try to knock the rest of those out the week of June 4th. But we've pretty much reached the limit of what was authorized for us, so to keep things moving, we feel if you guys authorize like another $50,000 or so of survey, that would get us to when the funding is actually obligated. And once the funding's obligated, either way, the city fronts all these design costs and everything, and then the loans are closed, loans and grants are closed at the end of the project. So, I guess that either way, you're fronting it, and it would be reimbursed at the end of the project. So if you're comfortable with it, we could, we could use the additional time on the front end here to keep doing some survey before the funds are formally obligated by the funding agency. So in that same conversation about why they're prioritizing things the way they are, the program director for the state, the RD program director indicated they basically got a lot more money available to obligate this year than they thought. So if the city had an appetite for it, we could include a few more phases in with the Phase 3A funding package. It would just be the funding package. It could still be split out in separate construction contracts, so it's not like you'd be committing to doing all of this in one summer and, you know, the whole town will be ripped up. It can be phased out. They do want the funds to be spent within three years, which means construction would need to be done in three years, so we're probably looking at, if you wanted to move forward this way, Phase 3A in 2019 construction, and then probably two more phases of reconstruction projects that could potentially start in fall of 2019, otherwise it would mostly be 2020. And then the fourth phase would be just a separate lining project where the, based on the information we have from televising and everything, and this is kind of a review of what we've talked about before, some of the lines in town can just be lined, they don't need to be dug up and replaced. And that's kind of a specialty contractor that would be doing that work, so we would separate that into a separate construction contract. So those are the potential, and that's just, you know, when we took a first look at this, if we can get to this, and I don't know if I mentioned when I was talking here, that they projected approximately 10 to 15 million available in this funding package. So those phases, and if you look at the map that I, did everyone have a map? Otherwise, I brought extra copies of. So the dark blue phase down Third Street, that's what 3A is, and that's what we've been working on, that was planned to be the next, the next phase to get to the approximately 15 million. The orange phase, which would be Phase C, the brown, which is Phase G, red is J, purple is D, and then H is this kind of lighter blue, I guess, not in the far west, but it's actually east of Third Street, it's a, don't want to get your blues confused with Phase H. And then those dash lines, that's the CIPP. So that, all we are doing there is what can we do, because some of these you have to do in the right order, what can we do to get to the 15 million that they have available? And that would be the, those phases would be the ones that would make sense to get to that. So that's 14.9 of RD eligible costs, and if you recall, each of these projects, there's a portion of ineligible costs, which are basically the street improvements that don't fall right over the utility trench. RD doesn't, you know, they're not in the business of improving a city's streets, they're in the business of improving the utilities and any street costs that are absolutely necessary to remove and replace the utility, those are the only street costs that they pay for. So beyond that, trench width for the utility is what is an ineligible cost. So for all of those, there would be approximately 4.6 million ineligible. And then there are things we could do to reduce those ineligible. Some of these streets are quite a bit wider than they probably need to be. There might be potential for actually closing a street and converting it to like a greenway. Don't know, I mean, that's something we could talk about, but it could save some costs, it might not work because of driveways or you only, you know, it might be a through, through street or something, but it's something that could be explored to reduce those ineligible So that's kind of where we are. Like, again, it would be split up into four separate construction phases, and right now, I guess all we're looking for is authorization to include that in the PER, to basically request funding for it, and when the time comes to sign the letter of conditions for the funding package, they could be removed, so you wouldn't be committing to it. Obviously, if there's no appetite for it now, we can just not do it. The nice part about doing it now is we know the money's available for, for those rural development funds, for these, up to this, approximately 10 to 15, so they might come back and say, no, it ended up only being 12, so you're going to have to cut out three or whatever. And then of the ineligible, well, of all the costs, but as with any of the other reconstruct projects, another funding source would be special assessments.
That's a popular source.
Yeah, right, right.
Not to interrupt, Chris, but just to get my head wrapped around here. We're throwing out some numbers. The rest of the upgrade we looked at was for the entire community was about 35 million, right?
Yes.
So what you're talking about here is a third of that, roughly.
Yep.
And out of that third, 70% been covered by RD, and the city would have to assess a bond for the other 30%, rough numbers?
We're, we're hoping we have that number. The RD area specialist was here today, and there, he was trying to get a jump on some of the underwriting, but because you guys refinanced one of the bonds, it raised some questions with the auditor, so by the next meeting, he's hoping to have that grant loan split. The 37 million, I think it was the last full number, that would have included both eligible and ineligible costs.
Yeah, those total costs, yeah.
Right. This 14.9 is, that's all RD eligible, but then there's a question, how much of that is RD loan, which is the 40-year low interest, and how much is the grant?
Right.
And then there's a 4.6 of the ineligible, which would be.
That would be.
100% city.
Yep.
Yep, yep. So total project cost is more like 19 and a half for all of this. 14.9 would be.
So this is almost half of it.
Yeah.
Half of what they, yeah.
Right, right.
Do you have a map?
Yeah.
I have to see for my card.
I can put it up on the screen, too.
Okay.
I just got to get my cord. Here it is.
So you know what, it's in the picture, actually more distant than this one?
This is more the liquor store's Front Street.
That's South Street?
This is South, I'll give you the Front Street.
So for the, for reference, in Phase 1, approximately 22% of the total project cost, or excuse me, of the eligible RD costs was grant, and for the ponds, approximately 11% was. But we're expecting quite a bit more than that because the, we, I'll find my reasons here, I know I mentioned it. Oh, because we weren't into the grant yet for water main, because if you recall, the grants kick in once the city hits a maximum affordability, and that's based on the mean, the median household income, and then how much, it's one and a half percent, and that's how much, that's RD's formula for how much each household can afford for utility rates. So that, you work to, based on the total number of households and users, you get to a total debt service per year that they say the city can afford, and then anything beyond that is what would be eligible for grant, potentially. They still have to have the money, but that's how they, they come up with that. So back when we did Phase 1, the water wasn't quite getting there. We think we'll have some grant eligibility on the water system side, probably not storm sewer, and the sewer should be pretty significant grant. So hopefully in two weeks, we'll have a decent estimate from RD on what the loan grant split would be. And then again, the loan, the RD loan is 40-year term, low interest.
Do you foresee, so it's like we're doing a chunk now that's like 19 million worth, do you foresee the same potential funding when we have to do like the last half of the whole deal?
Possibly, but, I mean, it's, they can change the.
Consistent from year to year on?
They've been fairly consistent, but not, I would never try to predict what, I mean, who knows if this program will even exist.
Right.
In four or five years. But once, once the funding package is obligated, then it's, as long as you use it within that 30, three years, and that's when the interest rate gets locked in, too. So if.
Is that the front end?
Yeah, right. So, yeah, this is, this blue is the Phase 3A we've been talking about as the next one. If you recall, the, so there are like two kind of spines, we call them, that all the other phases need to branch off of. One is Third Street and one is Center Street. Center Street, it's a county road, so we're kind of waiting on that one until we get up on the, it gets up to be in the current year in the county's CIP schedule, because that way all the road costs will basically be covered by the county, and then the city's costs will be just utilities. So all the ones we're proposing are branching off of this 3A, which would be, again, C, which is Fifth Street and the side streets, well, CG and J are all Fifth Street and the side streets, and then this purple area, and this other, I guess it's more of a bluish gray, we'll call it. That, we foresaw branching off of Center Street, but we can reconfigure some things pretty easily and have it branch off of some recent improvements on Morgan or Second. So that, and then the CIPP are all these dash lines. So again, I guess either way, the, keeping things on schedule for 2019 construction, that additional authorization for doing more survey would help that, but then the additional phases, we would update the PER, and there's a section in there basically saying, what are you recommending the city do, or what are you asking for, for funding, basically? And that's what we would update, include this. Right now, the PER, we lay out all the reasons, all the deficiencies, and what the proposed improvements would be, just so we have kind of a roadmap to go forward with subsequent asks for money, but right now, the, the request for funding only includes this 3A and a little bit of the CIPP, the lining. So if we can get that revised, and then again, they have, they have to get everything obligated by the end of July.
You know, this might be stepping ahead, but you know, Phase I, isn't, what is like needed out there?
Phase I.
The green.
Lower left there.
Yep.
I can, or whatever.
Yeah, there's some, it's a lot of the same, it's just not as bad yet. I mean, it's not, not as high of a priority, but there's, there's some failing sewer, I and I.
Water mains are pretty tough there.
Yeah. Sewer, sanitary's been the driver for the most part as far as prioritizing which phases, but, I mean, there aren't many streets that we could tear into and not, not need to replace everything that's there.
Well, and as you're doing sanitary, you're mitigating your I and I.
Yes, right.
That's the big thing, too.
Right.
So what, what you're asking for then is the council's permission for another $50,000 to continue surveying for those.
Continue surveying just for this, and that will keep us on, whether you want to do the rest or not, that'll help us stay on schedule and be, once we get the funds obligated, even if it's just this, we'll have a lot of the survey done, otherwise, if you waited for the funding to be obligated, we couldn't really do much more on the project.
So you'd only be surveying the Third Street portion?
At the.
Additional survey.
Yep.
And then the other thing you want to notice, if we include those other projects, CDG, H, and J in this PER?
Yes. And then the.
And that's at no.
Right, we did all the.
You've already done the legwork on that.
Yeah, and we'll have some time, we have to update some exhibits and do a little more detail in the narrative. That's not, we won't charge anything for that, I mean, it's not.
So what changed from when you first wanted the first, like, 70, was it 75,000? What'd you get the first time, right?
Yep.
What changed between that and now needing another 50?
That was just, at that time, we thought that would be enough to bite off, to keep us busy until the funds got obligated. But now, they're saying, we think there won't be an issue, there won't be a ton of back and forth on the PER review, this is RD saying this, so they're not prioritizing it, so they're pushing it, pushing it off as long as they can, trying to get these other ones where they know there'll be more back and forth with the community or their engineer. So that's, I guess, I mean, we turned it in four months ago, we didn't think that, yeah, we haven't gotten comments back, yep, yep. So it's not, it's not additional costs, it's just spending more before it's obligated.
And it's a reimbursable expense.
Yes, yep. I mean, if you wanna, on the second part, the PER, if you wanted to wait until we had the grant loan, more grant loan information from RD, I mean, that's fine. We're not under much of a time crunch yet.
There's no other grants out there, I don't, we, I can't even think of his name anymore, it's been so long since I talked about it.
Ed Upes?
Ed Upes, Chuck, he's, he's in charge of the WIF funding? Or the WIF grants?
Yeah, he worked with you on the, on the pond project-
Right.
The, the WIF and the small city side. But really, it's rural development, they go, they're kind of the lead and they coordinate with the state agency, yep.
So that's like, that part of the equation's taken care of?
Yeah, right. There, there might end up being state money involved with this, but RD is the one that-
RD is the one that-
Coordinates with, it would be the Public Facilities Authority, PFA, and that, that's who administers these other grants.
And my other question on the funding side of things, with, when you, is when you get to that percentage on, on the bills, where more is grant than is loan? When are they gonna look at our finances on what our utility rates are and see what our billing rate is? Is that before they award this next round, or is that gonna be down the road?
That's kind of, the way I understand it, there's nothing saying what you, there's nothing mandating what you charge for rates.
Right.
They, they just want to make sure you're-
Charging enough.
Yeah, and that you, that's what they use to determine your affordability.
Right.
I asked Jeff that today, and he said, really, you can't judge what the rates would need to go to at this point-
No.
Until they, cause he thinks, you know, we should probably wait and let it go for one year with our current rates, which would be, what, July, end of July?
July, August, yeah.
Yeah. And then see how, how it, you know, how we did as far as the increase-
Right.
Over the last year, and then see at that point if you, we should reevaluate.
And I, I bring that up solely so it stays upfront that we need to look at this every year and see where we're at and, and how it balances out. And I'd like to, when they do the audit review, get an answer from them, what they've seen as far as an increase in those funds and-
They think, I mean, based on what I've asked them, is, they would suspect that we'd have to increase again. But unless we have them do an actual study.
They won't know how much, I understand that.
That's about all I know on that.
I'd rather inch up to it than jump up to it and, okay. Those are my questions. So, we don't need a resolution?
Do we need to do anything today?
Motion for the fifty?
Yeah, the fifty would be nice, we can-
Is that being a resolution, just a motion or an act on a resolution later at the next meeting?
I don't think it would need a resolution.
I think we did a motion.
I would, I would make a motion to, to go ahead and spend the extra fifty thousand to get those guys working on, on the surveying on this current project. And also add the additions that they suggested to the PER.
I'll second that. We have a first and second any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Question carries.
Thank you. This might not be the right time, but did, I forgot during agenda revision time, do we want to talk about the services on phase one, or should we wait to talk to Matt?
That, or you can talk about it on the Dunick change order too.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah.
Kind of related.
Yep.
Hey, do you want to send off the gentleman?
Sure. He was supposed to be here, I don't see him. If I can get the screen to go away.
You want to wait and see if he shows up? Are you okay?
Has he told six thirty or?
Yep.
I would think he'd be here by now.
So it really boils down to is, the water was shut off. Hell, it'd been turned, sent over to turn off the curb stop on this address and two twenty-five East Morgan. And the curb stop was turned back on after he left, for whatever reason, when I did the profile. So he's looking, he's claiming that the renter could have turned it back on. I just really don't see that happening, but looking for pretty much two months billing as a reimbursement, but, I don't know if you had looked at all the memos? It's kind of, doesn't quite make, add up, but, the other thing he's looking at is, which has been, I guess it, it is a problem that we're seeing. And really, I don't think we can do anything with it until we update the rest of the radio read meters, is to have it one month behind, instead of two months behind on the billing. Because otherwise, it gives us everyone one more month to leave on, on the landlord's, you know, in a tenant situation. Or the city in a resident situation, you know, there's no guarantee of getting that paid off, so, you know, once they leave town, so. That being said, I guess I would just keep that under your hats as far as a possible change in the future. I think we're down to the sixties-ish now left meters to replace. Of course, the worst ones are the last, but, well, we're slowly getting them changed out, so.
What time, kind of a timeframe are you looking at?
Next year.
Next year?
Yeah.
I can definitely understand that because I've experienced that. But as far as the other things concerned, I had to pay for my tenants that left.
As everyone else has too, so.
And I hope it's an issue that we can solve for any landlord essentially.
I just think it's, it would set the wrong precedence again. I mean, if we do it for one, we have to do it for everybody, so then why would we even have the, the right, the statue, the ordinance, the ordinance to, to do it, so.
And I think that now that you have the deposits mandatory, that makes a world of difference. I mean, it protects the-
And some of these that we're running into are still pre-deposit renters.
Yeah.
So we don't, I mean, some are a hundred dollars and some are even nothing, but most of them are a hundred dollars, no. Had a little change of the renters over the years, so we've caught up there a little bit. But, you know, the two hundred dollar thing helps, but, I guess I just recommended that they would, you know, just add it to their damage deposit or something to, I guess it's really the only way that, at this point, to help them out as far as, you know, utility bills that are delinquent, when the tenant moves out, so. That's about all I have on that.
On that subject shade, I don't know if it'd come up, but if somebody walked in the office tomorrow who already, who already had a radio read meter and said, I would like to go just one month behind, is there any bookkeeping way they can do it for one and not the others?
Not really.
Okay, I just-
It'd be a mess.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure that got brought up.
Yeah. And then that would be kind of, I know, I know for a fact Electric Company did it to me probably six, seven years ago. I mean, they just charged you for two months, you know, on one month, but then they just kind of gave you a little grace period, you know, a couple of months extra to pay it or whatever, but I don't know how else to really convert it over, I mean, other than-
Well, but it's one of those too, if everybody, you know, next year, let's say this time, everybody knows it's coming.
Yep.
And if someone come in and overpaid on their bill,
Yep.
You could do that and get ahead of it.
Yeah.
Okay. As far as Sam stuff, I died for lack of motion.
Okay. Charter change recommendations?
After the last meeting, we were directed by the council to make changes, see if you saw the changes in the packet. Instead of doing the twelve years, we decided to do the fourteen, taking into consideration any possibility of an appointment that would suffice then the three terms. So, we made a recommendation and put it in the minutes, I'm trying to find it here. The first one be, that the council be six people and one mayor. The second one being, a mayor or councilperson who has served a total of fourteen consecutive years shall take a full calendar year absence from the city council before being eligible to be elected at large by, for mayor or councilperson. So then there's no possibility of anybody getting caught in the appointment stage and not being able to serve the, the full three terms.
I have a question on this.
Sure.
What has changed in the last six years that we need to go from five to seven? Cause we were seven, then we went, city ordered to go to five.
Right.
What's changed that we need to go back to seven?
We feel as a charter unanimously that we need more diversity and we need more representation.
Who's not being represented?
We feel that there would be a better possibility of people feeling represented if there was more council people.
So how did this all start?
Was brought to us, was brought to the charter by many different citizens that they felt that would be one way. And as a charter, we unanimously decided that would be what we would recommend to the city. We felt that that needed to go to a vote so that people, the voters actually had the choice in this.
So with that being said, can this become a yo-yo that it goes to the voters on this election? And then-
Two years later, we go back.
Two years we come back to this where-
I don't know.
After it's gone up, say even, say four years, that then it can come back saying now, it would always have to come through the charter, right?
I don't know that it would. I think maybe they, it would, it can come through the charter, or can they just do it on their own as a, as a petition? I don't know. That would be a Matt question.
Well, it could be petition, but that's rarely done.
I mean, cause that's the thing, is just the whole yo-yo thing, cause I was thinking it was longer. I was surprised when I looked back-
It was two thousand and eleven, yep.
Only six, six years, so I mean, it's only been three, technically three elections. And I was surprised, I thought it was longer ago than that. So I'm just sitting here-
It went to a vote last time, cause I voted against it. I had a, a number of people that said they wanted to keep it at seven, so I voted against reducing it-
Right.
Size of council. And when they did the actual vote, the number of people I talked to were the ones that wanted to keep it at seven. The rest of them, the majority are the ones who wanted to reduce it. So I don't, from what I've talked with people, they've seen nothing that wants to change. I've been, I've found no one that wants to go back to seven now, so. And it was the same people that wanted to bring it, leave it alone the first time, so.
I've had a couple, I've had some people on both sides actually approach me, some that like, some that don't.
Well, I think what was decided at the last meeting is really, it's gonna need to go to a-
The voters.
Vote. So, I mean, we can sit here as a council and dispute it for both sides, but technically, it's gonna need to go to the vote. So I think why raise any havoc, any trouble, any whatever? Let's just get it on the ballot, let the people speak how they feel-
Right.
Before it's voted on, people can be out there campaigning for whichever way they want it to go. But ultimately, the people again will speak.
Make the decision, yeah.
I just want it not to keep coming to the council every four to six years because another faction of the population thinks that all they want it going back the other way. Because I have heard very strong opinions both ways.
So have I, so-
And that's my concern, because people feel very strongly both ways, that whoever views them as, that they lost this one, well, they'll just get it back on the ballot again.
Yep.
So I think we need to do a good job to make people knowledgeable about the pros and the cons from each side. So people show up to vote-
Right.
And we live with what the people say.
Exactly.
So tonight, do we need to, it's, we've already-
Well, no, we need to approve this tonight because we cleaned up that part of the act, the, the language that, that made it, took into consideration the appointment and the, and the terms, so. What we sent forward this time as a unanimous vote would need to be approved to go to the voters.
Okay, and from reading your, your minutes and from Matt's comments, it doesn't matter if it's unanimous from the city council or not.
If it's unanimous from the council, then it goes to a, just like any other ordinance change, and it doesn't go to a vote. And that's what happened last time. There was one holdout on it.
Is it for Matt?
So it had to go to a vote. If the council one hundred percent agrees to it, it's just an ordinance change. You have a public hearing on it, then the ordinance is changed.
So for it to go to the vote, one of us will have to vote.
Make a motion. Well, one of us, before we can even vote on it, one of us has to make a motion to approve it.
To accept the recommendations.
To accept the recommendations.
I'm questioning that, Tony, didn't we talk about that, Shane and Diane? I did, I think no matter what, it still has to go to the people, doesn't it?
There's still a public, there's still a public hearing.
Hearing, okay.
Either way.
Well, we have time to figure, yeah.
There's still a public hearing either way. But it's whether or not it goes on the ballot is-
Or you guys approve it unanimously.
And it, yeah, then it'll still be a public hearing.
Okay.
There's, there's gonna be a public hearing no matter what happens here tonight.
Okay.
And then where did the term length stuff come from?
We cleaned up the language that was in our charter. That was already originally in there and we, and after discussing it all, we wanted to make sure that it was cleaned up to also bring into consideration anybody's appointment.
But I always look at term limits being the people voting, the people back into their seats.
I understand that that's already in the charter that there is a term limit.
But it's never been upheld?
I think that was just a once.
For who?
Russ.
Yeah.
And he was on for, was he off for a year?
No, he was on for over twenty years, I think.
Twenty-four.
And then it was brought up again with Steve, and then the opinion of the city attorney at that time was, A, was never voted on by the public, so it wasn't a good rule anyway. And B, by changing seats, the way it was written, it didn't matter. So if you went from the council seat to the mayor's seat and back to the council seat, you reset your clock.
But to take it back to, to what you're asking, if this, if the voters turn down term limits, then, then that would be removed from the charter. Cause it's going to be in two parts. That was what, we didn't want it to be just one. It's going to be in two separate parts, whether we're going to increase or continue the same size, or we're going to enforce the term limits with language that takes into consideration a person's appointment.
And then when would this take place? When would it start?
In January, I believe. Let's start with the next.
So then I'm already two years into return?
Yes.
And you'll be how far in?
Yeah, cause he had a sabbatical, so he's, he's the same as you.
And then you guys, your seats are both up, correct?
Yeah. But their appointments, they'd start in, they would be an elected term?
That's how they get to fourteen.
Right.
But then, so if this passes-
Yes.
Everything passes come November fifth or whatever it is, how do we get two more people on council? That would have to be an appointment.
Would that, no, that would go by popular vote?
Go back, they'd do, they'd have to go on the next election cycle.
So we'd still be a five person for another two years?
Two years, yeah.
At the end of our time, yeah.
That's what I thought, I read it, I was just making sure.
Or would it go by popular vote if it goes into effect?
It would go into effect after the first year.
You're right.
You can't, you're not gonna go back.
Back, okay.
Well, I guess, I'll make a motion because I'll be honest, it's gonna go to the, to the voters one way or another.
The other.
If we don't, I'm not saying it needs to be a unanimous vote, I mean, at least, I'm not saying that by any means. But I think we, we need to bring it forward as a motion. Cause if not, they're gonna do a petition to get it, and I'll be honest, I do not want to go down that petition route again. I don't think that's the professional way as a council we want to work. And as commissions that are to work with the council, I don't think those petitions should be something we want to go to. So I will make a motion to accept the recommendations from the charter commission. Do I have to say this to this- Do I have to say this to, about increasing the council size and putting in the term limits? Can I make part of my motion that it goes to the voters either way or not?
If you agree upon it.
Well, it's going to go to the voters.
Voters, right.
Well, it's going to go to the public hearing, but it's not going to go on the ballot if it's a unanimous.
I'll vote no so you can vote in the public. I'm used to being the bad guy.
I just, I want it to go to the voters.
Well, no, Tony, we want to get it to the voters. Because this is, this is a-
I want it to go on the ballot because I think it's going to be the commission deciding this or the council. I think it should be the citizens.
Right, there's enough different people, we're getting, you know, enough different opinions from different people. This needs to go to the voters.
I think you'd actually make a motion saying you want it to go to the voters.
There you go.
Then that's what I might, want my motion to show is that I want it to go to the voters.
As written by the recommendation of the commission in two separate issues concerning the council size and the term limits.
Correct.
So they can be voted on separately.
I'll second it.
I'll just say your vote, no, go ahead and second it.
I can still vote, no.
All those in favor? Close?
It's going to a ballot vote, so I'll, I'll vote aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Do you want to set a public hearing date?
Do we need a public hearing if we're just going right to the ballot?
Yes, you still do.
Yep.
Because that is the statute.
Should we look at June?
Twenty-fifth.
Does that be the eighteenth?
Twenty-fifth, yeah.
You're going on the twenty-fifth, we're higher.
You get two at the same time?
I think we're going to do-
I want that six forty-five.
Yeah.
You're doing that seven.
Yep.
Make a motion of a public hearing on the twenty-fifth of June at 7:00 PM regarding the questions of council size and term limits.
Second that.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Do you want to talk about-
Yes, about the land proposal. The last time we spoke about this, I went out and walked that off. I haven't measured it exactly. It is thirty-five feet. To be even with that property line that is the bakery that you suggested, Jerry, which would be enough to put snow on and still have people to be able to park. So what I am proposing, I'll pay for the legal description and a hundred dollars for the transfer of the land title from the city to ours. That's what I paid for the last little chunk that we worked on over at Country View Apartments. The land description is probably, what? Hundred dollars?
Hundred dollars.
So is that liquor, that's the liquor store stuff now, correct?
Yeah, it's behind the patio, but it's not the whole thing. It's just the thirty-five feet closest to the alley.
Hold a map up, so, I've got another option you can look at, Rosemary, without having to get any lawyers involved or surveyors or title transfer.
I like that, let's see it.
That curb that runs basically from behind John's Drug up to, to the back of the property, if you took that out, you could angle park at least four cars in there and not be in the way of the alley. And it'd all be on your property anyways. You owe, it's a twenty-five foot wide. You got, the only obstacle is that one telephone pole and you could put a, if you angle park in there, because it's a one-way alley, if you angle park in there, you could get two cars, one on each side of that pole without any problem.
You're talking in here?
Yeah. And you're only going to need two, two parking spots, right?
Well, no, I have an upstairs and a downstairs apartment, so there's a possibility of four cars. That's why I wanted to purchase that.
You're saying she'd have four parking spots?
Well, you could, yeah, you could get four in there too if you angle it. You could angle four all the way back and not be in anybody's right of way more than what's in there right now, if you look at those property lines.
Okay, and it's going to be, all right, because I want to be able to put in there that people, that this is private parking in the winter.
That's, I bring that up because then, it being your land, you could put your sign up, this is apartment number two, number one, whatever. And then that'd be their parking, you could paint lines. It's just a matter of relocating that curb and-
Well, that would be-
Because I don't like-
Would that be the city's expense to relocate that or?
It's on your property.
There was, actually, no, there is, there supposedly, Doc came over and talked to me about that. There was an easement in there for parking with the agreement that they took part of his property to put that curb in.
I'll have to go back and look at that.
Yeah, he did say that.
There is an easement that exists through there, but I'm not sure what-
I'm not quite sure of it either, what it is. But there was an easement at one time before they, to accommodate everybody being able to park.
And I just don't want to get into the habit of selling little chunks of property here and there and everywhere else, because then all of a sudden we're going to have everybody that owns property downtown looking for thirty feet here and forty feet there.
That was, that was the thing on the Living Farms property. Frank at the time was, was the attorney. And his argument against selling that was, there was no provisions to a large parking lots in the business, central business district, so that's why they didn't sell you that. And that, in effect, with what you're trying to do by the purchasing would be the same thing. That's why I come up with the suggestion about angling it and you could get your, your vehicles in there and shouldn't be any, any big problem.
So, but it's, you're going up over a curb.
Yeah, you'd have to take the curb.
And that's where you'd have to check to see-
Yeah, because it's your guys' curb. And there's an easement in place.
Shane needs to check that out.
They'd have to be looked at, but that to me is the simplest solution.
I mean, if there's room for four cars.
Right, yeah.
That's your, your goal.
Yeah.
So then the main question is, is whose expense is the curb?
Yep.
For the removal.
And, and you know, what kind of issues is that going to create for snow removal and all kinds of other things?
Long time before winter, we still got time to talk about this.
Well, and the other thing too, if, you know, if you start decreasing sales and then somebody else decides to put apartments above their downtown buildings and there's no place to park, where are you going to put them?
That's a good question. We, we do need to start talking about that.
This is a good answer to it. If you have the property, you can do that. If you don't have the property, then, you know, it's a, they have to find a place to park during, during snow removal. And they'd have to walk, I mean, that's... But if you look into that, I think that's going to be the cheapest way all the way around. It'll satisfy not selling land for parking lots and-
Do you want to table this at the next meeting and see if I can round up the easement for it?
Yep.
Yes.
That'd be a good idea.
Yep.
Casey's General Store Off Sale Malt Liquor License.
I'll make a motion to approve since the fees are paid.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Animal Rescue, do you guys want to talk?
Hi, I'm Kathy Nelson. I'm the president of the Tracy Area Animal Rescue.
And I am Liz Struve and I'm the treasurer of the rescue.
So, we're here tonight to propose a task force made up of TAR, the police department, city residents, maybe some city council members to address the animal neglect and abuse situation that we have in Tracy. Our director was sending emails. Did everybody get them?
This was a while back.
Yes, yeah.
I think it explained the situation as well as stating what TAR is and, and the size and what we have done over the last few years. Did it include all the information like that? Okay, just to make sure everyone's aware of, of that.
Yes. We had a situation almost six months ago now where we had gotten a report of a dog that was being mistreated. And when I went out and checked on it, I found the dog dead. It was, it was skeletal and tied up to an empty dog house. It had been zero or below the previous nights. No food, no water. And it was a really bad situation. I think that, you know, we did put on our Facebook page that this had occurred. We did not put any pictures on there. And we had over thirty thousand outraged people that were really mad that this was allowed to happen anywhere. So what we are proposing is that we form a coalition, the Tracy Area Animal Rescue. We've gotten big enough so that we are able to help. I think it's a win-win situation for the city of Tracy, but we do need cooperation. We, no, if there is a family that doesn't have enough money to buy dog food or cat food, we've got it. We have extra blankets and straw. We've got extra dog houses. We have a lot of knowledge, but we have to know about the people who need assistance. And up to this point, we really have not, you know, our name has not been thrown out there as an organization that can help and make sure that the animals aren't mistreated in Tracy.
We've had other communities, I have to note also, that have contacted us when there've been people that, you know, if they've lost a job or need help in feeding their animals. We oftentimes, instead of them wanting us to place them elsewhere, we're able to provide food. Other communities within our region are quick to approach us. I guess our offer would be that people within Tracy are aware of us and that we're used as an option for people that are having difficulty, that they do contact us and, you know, not like there's a lot of questions asked, other than we just want to be able to help them, you know, be able to take care of their animals. And if money is an issue, or oftentimes I believe too, that people aren't aware of the different laws that are there in regard to the care of animals. And you're starting to see that more throughout Minnesota. And I think that, you know, the police force as well as people on the council need to be aware of what's expected as far as the treatment of animals.
It's not just us crazy cat ladies and dog people that want to see these animals treated well. It is in statute. There are very specific recommendations as to what a dog house needs to consist of and what the area that animals are kept of, kept at need to look like. You know, they have to have bedding, they have to have access to shade and food and water. So, you know, it's not just us being crazy, it's the law. We're really hoping that if we all work together, that this could be something that, that could be a big plus for the city of Tracy. You know, we said, we chose not to put the picture of that dog on our Facebook page. Just because we knew that there would be a lot of very, very angry people. But we wanted to make sure that we had something positive that would come out of it. We didn't just want people out harassing the guy that owned the dog. And we didn't want them going after the city council or going after the police department because that could have happened. We chose to reach out to try to make something positive happen, to make sure that this kind of thing doesn't happen again. It was atrocious, you saw the pictures. I showed those pictures to a veterinarian and she said horrendous. She said, this was not one night or two nights or three nights. This dog suffered for a long time. Long time. She was teary-eyed. So, you know, we can do better than that. And I really think that it would be easy enough to do it. Our organization is pretty big. We've got, you know, some clout, we've got a lot of very knowledgeable people who are willing to work hard. But we do need cooperation. We need to know where the families are that could use some help. We need to have people take it seriously when, when a complaint is called in. If they're, you know, I know of a place over there, they've got their dogs living in a slop hole. It's awful. You know, it shouldn't be allowed. It's against the law.
For anyone that follows our Facebook, and if you don't currently, you might want to do that and go back and see the comments that were made by people in, in the community as well as elsewhere. But even since then, and that's been six months, we still are receiving private messages from people asking what's happened, what changed in Tracy. And I think that we would really like the opportunity to say, we visited with the council, these are the changes that are going to be made. It was a one-time thing. You know, we don't want to, I mean, we don't want to be a part of things like that continuing to happen. And I think that without change, that's exactly what will happen.
You might want to say, since you're on speaker, like how somebody would find you on Facebook, so if like the public knows of somebody that needs your help.
Okay, we're on Facebook, Tracy Area Animal Rescue. And we also have a page, tracyareaanimalrescue.com. Yeah, two As.
But we're talking about a rescue that started obviously in Tracy and that name has stayed and, and I think it's been a positive thing. But, you know, it started very small. And I think this, like last year alone, it was over three hundred animals that came through.
More than that.
That came through. And we're talking since the inception of the rescue, there's been over two thousand animals that have come through that have been saved. So it's not, I mean, we are now into South Dakota, into Iowa, in obviously southwest Minnesota. I mean, we have fifty homes. We have no facility, but we do have fifty different fosters that are willing to take animals in. And these are people throughout, you know, southwest Minnesota and, and a little bit into, into Sioux Falls. But these are all people that, she said crazy and she is, but now me on the other side. No, but I mean, but a lot, a lot of people are willing to step up and, and give up their time and their home and, and be part of this rescue. So it, and it's growing all the time.
So what are you specifically asking of the council? I mean, because obviously you're not just in Tracy City.
No, no.
You just said you're in South Dakota, southwest Minnesota. So what are you asking of our council?
I think the reason we came here tonight is because that dog was found here. You know, something needs to be done here. And we actually are going to be reaching out to other city councils in some of the other area towns and try to, you know, get the cooperation of the police department. We can't do it without the police department, but-
Did the police not investigate this? I, I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to understand exactly what you're asking of us because if the police department did their investigation and everything-
He said that the dog was gone by the time he got there.
There's a report filed that's, it's gone through the processes.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. It's gone through the legal process and everything. So then what more do you want of us as a city? Because I believe the city responded.
I think the city could have responded better. You know, there was no follow-up with the owner of that dog. There had been a call before that the dog did not have food and water. Never heard anything about that being checked on again. You know, there were a lot of loopholes in this whole situation, and that dog was the, was the end result of it.
So are you looking like for reassurance from us that we take these things serious?
No, I'm looking, I'm looking at this being taken seriously, that this is a law. Animals cannot be abused and neglected and starved and left in a pen that's nothing but cattle panels and plywood and mud on the ground. You know, that is not good enough. And if we have people that will support being compassionate to animals and a police department that will follow up on it, and if there is anything that we could do to help...
Before something like this happens.
That we would be notified. I mean, we could have helped out there. You know, if, if the guy was too poor, we could have stuffed that dog house full of blankets and straw and put a door on it, and we've got lots of food. We could have taken it to the vet. None of that had to happen. And I'm sure there are more cases like that. You know, it's, this is not something that I think Tracy wants to be associated with. Now, there was that big uproar when there were those pit bulls running around in that greenhouse unattended. You know, you guys probably don't follow the, the animal rescue sites. It was all over the state about how those dogs were in there and nobody was doing anything about it, and the Humane Society was going to come down. It was a mess. You know, we need to be proactive and make sure that Tracy and the Tracy Area Animal Rescue are being proactive and compassionate and leader in this animal welfare situation. But what I think we need is, you know, we are willing, as our Tracy Area Animal Rescue volunteers, you know, we will meet, you know, anytime, anywhere. I think it would be important for someone on the city council or a representative and a member of the police department to get together so we can establish a protocol so that if there is a call, or if there is a bad situation, that we can come and help if it's needed and that it's acknowledged so that, you know, the calls don't go unanswered. That if there is an injured animal, that it gets to see the veterinarian, not just lays on the side of the road or is tied up to the dog house and dies.
So would you have a sample protocol that you have with other cities that you could share with us to look at?
Nope, this is the first one. That's what, that's what happens when the name's in our title.
Well, because Tracy Area, when you're going all the way out to South Dakota and everything, I mean, that's kind of beyond Tracy Area, but I understand the organization.
But that's how much it's grown for the need.
Yeah, when we started, Jan Arvisu and I, we're just hanging around out at the pound. That's how it started. So, you know, we've grown. And apparently, it's very necessary because we're getting bigger every month.
Do you have any literature or contact cards or anything that you leave in the city offices so people are aware of your programs? And is it there? Are you there now, or have you...
We can certainly put some in there. You know, I guess social media has been our, and word of mouth has been our main means of communicating to people.
But when you talk about, you know, Tracy Area and kind of the, you know, that Tracy's actually been distanced from it, and that isn't necessarily true because a lot of our supporters are from right around here, and this is where it started, and there's a lot of support and people that are well aware, you know, in the surrounding area around Tracy.
Well, just this year, we've taken seven dogs and eight cats from Tracy. So, you know, I guess that involves the city council also because we're saving Tracy a ton of money. You know, even if those, if those dogs and, I don't know what happens to the cats in here in the city of, of Tracy. But anyhow, if they would have been in impound and, you know, is it twenty-five dollars a day in impound now, and then the euthanasia fee, if that would come into play, I think that's probably another fifty bucks. So, you know, we're saving the city a lot of money by taking on these cases. And, you know, most people aren't aware of it.
Well, and that's where I think Tony comes with his idea to get people educated.
Yeah.
Social media is a big way to do it. But if somebody in town can't remember, I mean, Tracy Area Animal Rescue is pretty easy to remember, but you know, sometimes a person just doesn't remember it. That if there was even a poster with, with the information that they could, they would know they could come to the city offices and get that site.
Yep, that's a really good idea.
I've seen donation boxes, but I've never seen business cards or flyers or anything like that. I mean, it's...
We have had things up. We had a free spay and neuter clinic a couple of years ago. I think we, we had a ten thousand dollar grant, and then we had another fifteen thousand dollar grant, and we spayed and neutered lots and lots of the area dogs and cats for free. And we always provide rabies shots, which is a public health donation on our part. So, but that is a really good idea. We will get up, you know, an informational poster so that more people are aware of us. I guess we think we're kind of a big deal, but not everybody knows about us.
Put one at the grocery store, too.
Yeah, yes.
So, back to my previous question as far as what you're asking of, of us tonight. Is it reassurance that we will...
I think the coalition piece of it is, you know, that there's some involvement, and you asked if there's any protocol or whatnot that's been put together. I think that we're reaching out, that whether there's a representative from the council and someone from the police, that, that we do meet, and this is, this is how it's handled in this, in the future, you know, is how we're going to assure that we don't deal with dogs that have starved to death and, you know, been out in the cold and, and whatnot, when it's against the law to have it like that. So I guess that's probably the step we're looking for, is, is to put a group together and, and to work through some of the issues and talk about, you know, what can we do better? And, you know, how can we prevent the cruelty to animals in, in the Tracy area?
If there is an animal call, and if the conditions are not, are not good, you know, if the police department would just let us know, you know, if we could just get that much taken care of. So, you know, I don't know. Is the city council in charge of establishing what the, the police department members are taking care of? You know, is that your job to come up with the job description and exactly how things are handled?
Be more of the police commission?
Nope, it's the city administrator.
Police.
Well, we get one now. See, I'm not putting the bucket in your mouth.
I think it would be both.
Well, it could be both, yeah. Yeah.
I don't know who sets the bylaws in the past.
The simplest way to handle is at the lowest level. Lowest level would be between the administrator and the chief and say, "Okay, this is what you pass on to your kid, you guys, and there you have it."
But then we don't want to start micromanaging everyone either.
You know, it's like a see it texted thing, and that's nothing.
I don't know if this is something you'd want to put as an option, like on Carousel, or the council would be interested in putting that up on every half or our city Facebook page, or...
That'd be, that'd be a good place to do it.
But if you're for one organization, we're gonna do it for every organization.
Yep.
And where do you draw that line? And please do not take me that I do not think your organization is, is important. I'm just one that really looks at setting precedents and, and stuff like that. And if we do it for one organization, we need to do it for others. But I'd like to get the word out so that people would know where to call. And I do think when the new administrator starts in June, which isn't far away, that, that the administrator and the chief of police, because it is laws.
It's law.
Absolutely.
The, the, the police department is already charged to enforce the laws.
Yes.
That's not a requirement for the administrator or any of us to tell them that. I just think if we need to put a little stopgap in there as far as that you could be an organization that they could call for assistance. But I think that could be between the administrator and the police chief.
They handle it at the lowest level.
Chief of police once he comes. I mean, is that satisfactory?
With the instructions that the police department will cooperate.
Yeah, we'll get into that discussion not at this meeting here. That would be during their meeting.
Come back to this room on the sixth of June between eleven and one, and you can meet the new city administrator.
My, my bet is that he might have more important things to talk about on his, on his first day.
Oh, that's not even his first day. He's just coming by to say hi.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your time. We truly appreciate it and hope that there'll be something positive. We can report back on, on Facebook so people quit bothering us about what Tracy has done. So we appreciate that.
Well, I think you can very easily put on that. She brought it to the council's attention and that we're gonna have the new administrator and the chief of police, and, and we'll be looking into this.
Stay tuned for all those positive results.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you guys for all your work.
Thank you.
It's a guy asking for more money again.
Just a little bit more. This is for change order number two on the pond project. There's a swale that, there's a culvert that crosses under the county road on the south side of the pond prod, pond site. It's a swale that conveys water around the west side and then the north side. And at the very north end and underneath, there is a curtain drain, and that's collecting all the groundwater, intercepting the groundwater from natural groundwater and also the existing leaking ponds. So we have to provide separation. Anyway, towards the very downstream end, because of the topography of the site, the curtain drain, the pipe portion gets very shallow, and the surface drainage in the swale around, earlier this spring, we got a bunch of snow, and then it was eighty degrees. So there was just a ton of flow through there, and we had a bit of a washout. The contractor didn't have all the erosion control measures in yet, so they, they did the cleanup and everything at no cost because it was, because they hadn't implemented the erosion control and everything. So that all the cleanup for that incident was taken care of at the contractor's cost, but that did get us to thinking, and we wanted to line the, this last three hundred feet of the bottom of this trench with some rip rap to help armor that so it doesn't happen in the future. Even, even if the erosion control is in place in the future, you know, once it's all done, we just think a little, little insurance here would be good. So it's a change order for eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Rural Development has concurred with it, so it just needs your approval. In the grand scheme of the whole project, I think it works out to about point two percent of the project cost, so we had a five percent contingency on the project, so we're still well, well within that.
And if we don't do it, we'll end up coming back every couple of years in some way, shape, or form of a fifty percent...
Yeah, either really heavy rain or...
Heavy snow melt.
Heavy snow melt, yeah. It's something that could have been included, you know, in the original design. The bid would have been that much higher, but so that's kind of what the contingency is.
That's what this resolution twenty eighteen, twenty eight is for.
Twenty seven, I think.
No, twenty five, grabbed the wrong one. I looked at the right one and grabbed the wrong one. Yeah, okay. I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty eighteen, twenty seven, change order number two.
I would second that.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Do we want to move on to resolution twenty eight, twenty five? Gambling permit for Tracy Area Chamber of Commerce?
For the...
For the bingo stand?
What?
The bingo stand.
They're being proactive this year.
A little bit, yeah. I'd say so. I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty six. Oh, wait.
Twenty five.
Twenty five for the gambling permit.
I'll second.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
He's back again.
This one's kind of a formality. It's what we talked about at the last meeting, the State Street surface improvements. It'd be work change directive number seven, and then it'd be change order number nine. Would basically be the, the mechanism that changes the contract amount to complete that work. Rural Development got back to us today on this one as well, that they concur with that. It would all be ineligible, so they didn't really have much say in it, but they, technically, they need to concur with it, and they did. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead.
Yeah, you got to watch me.
You can tell by the look on all of our faces that...
Yeah, I was like, we talked about this, guys. Twenty six is for the pay application number three for minor contracting for the work that they've completed this spring so far, in the amount of four hundred ninety-seven dollars, five hundred and twenty, four hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents.
That sounds better.
Yeah.
That matches up.
Right.
I guess I started that jumping number stuff. I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty eighteen, twenty six for payment to minor contract, contracting.
I'll second it.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Work change order, or work change directive number seven and change order nine. This is formalizing the, getting that State Street work included in the phase one construction contract with Dunick. Rural Development concurred with it today.
Not on that, but it reminds me of something. Did they give a bid to the EDA for that parking lot to go along with? I know it's gonna come out a different...
Separate bid, yeah.
It's a separate bid, but they got that handled?
Yeah, it's the same as, I think it was brought up on the EDA meeting, like...
Make sure it's gonna be done at the same time.
For O'Brien Court, is that all... Paving the parking lot?
Jeff was coming in.
It's going in what, Martura in, it was supposed to be the first part of June sometime, right?
Whenever they're in with paving.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Dunick's did mention that to me last time I talked to him, too, so.
Just don't want to miss it somewhere.
Right.
There's a few others, I think, that are looking for some work, too.
I imagine, yeah. Well, I'd make a motion then to approve resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty eight.
I'll second it. First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, and then since that has to do with phase one, if you recall, there were, I think to start with, there were almost thirty.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two properties that needed reroute their services to the location of the new main. The old main was under houses and so forth. We're down to eleven that still haven't done it. We think, based on where one plumber is working, they'll probably knock out the rest of that block, we're hoping. And then a couple of more, we know, are in the works. So I think we'll be down to about six. But there's some work that Dunick... But there's some work that Dunick can't do, you know, digging down and abandoning the mains, the old mains that are still in service right now because these, these private services are still hooked to them. Dunick doesn't want to, and we wouldn't let them, dig down and abandon these. They have some other minor repair and punch list items to also take care of, and they kind of want to do it all in one mobilization. So the last letter we sent out to the property owners was in late April. We gave a deadline of June 15th, or the city may explore mechanisms to have the work completed and the costs assessed back. So we were exchanging a couple of emails with the city attorney last week, maybe it was the week before. At the next meeting, I think we'll have a more, maybe a detailed mechanism from, you know, his recommendation of how the city can go about getting this work done if it's not by then.
Has there been any personal contact with those property owners recently? You know, I, I understand the need to send them letters and everything and that, but we don't need door knocking and say, hey, this is what's going on and explain how the options are to help them as far as paying and...
Yeah, and I actually have, I know a couple that are in this, on the top, I think there's 11 left that need to be done before Dunick can continue. But they're waiting on their plumbers to get in prices so I can finish the paperwork for the special assessment.
Okay.
So, so I know there's a couple out there. Another one was for road intrusion or something that wasn't contingent on Dunick's completing.
I just want to make sure that we're keeping contact with them and doing everything we can in order to expedite it.
Yeah, I think all but one, we, when we first, sent the first letters out a couple of years ago, you know, they contacted us back, which we asked them to do, to coordinate location and all this, and now it's just a matter of, okay, you have to do it now. And we did send a letter to all the licensed plumbers in town, too, to remind them to, you know, maybe if someone contacted you about this and you haven't, you haven't followed up with them, that you should be doing that, so.
I think I've heard more from them than the property owners.
From the plumber?
Yeah.
Well, that's good. At least they're aware of it.
So just a heads up on that. I think we'll have something more formal at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Can we get a motion to do the municipal accounts payable without the break through beverage? Can we do the accounts receivable and the charter minutes all at the same time?
I'd make a motion to approve those.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now with break through beverage?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Update on the spring cleanup?
All right, well, I don't know if anyone drove by on cleanup day. I guess first I want to thank all the volunteers that helped. It was really hairy the first few hours. We had a line of like four cars, I think, at one point, but filled two dumpsters. I know Ron's recycling all the way, three trailer loads, and then I got a dump truck loaded tires and 27 mattresses. Probably covered everything, so quite a bit of junk left home, so I'm positive on that one.
There you go.
I don't know on Jason's side how many nuisances are left after the cleanup day, but...
I know this week.
But we're hoping, made a dent in that, too, so.
And then are we thinking this fall again to do another one or...
I think last year we decided just to do spring because the fall was kind of a flop last year. And I guess I don't have any prices yet back from, the costs are yet. If you need me to put something together for the next meeting, I can do that, so.
Have you heard any more about the Monroe Township?
Nope, other than my memo, I have heard nothing more on that, other than they're going to meet late May to discuss with their board, so.
So, how often do the township boards meet? Next month or twice a week?
Well, it's up to them.
Yeah.
I just hope the people that live in Monroe Township realize right now they don't have a fire contract and what that can do to their insurance and everything, and they are talking to those electors.
Well, I had somebody call me, and I told her the best thing to do is call your county commissioners, and she's like really nervous about the whole thing.
I mean, like we said at our last meeting, it's not that the city of Tracy Fire Department is going to refuse to respond to a call. My goodness, we're not that cold-hearted. But I hope they realize this can affect their insurance rates, everything, when there's not a contract in place. That's why there are contracts. We can't have townships without contracts, and some are forced into a contract. So talk, talk to those people if you haven't had the meeting yet because there needs to be a contract signed with somebody.
Okay, and open the liquor store patio under new business?
I think last year we had this open for a while during the summer months. I'm just going to see what your appetite is for doing that again.
I think I'd check with Sandy because if I remember right, it's like it got used like two times the entire summer.
Just for people to sit in?
Sit in at lunch.
They don't have their patio furniture anymore, do they?
No, that was all...
I think they kept a few things.
They kept a few?
I think just a couple tables and a few chairs.
I, I would say unless somebody comes up and requests it like they did last time, I wouldn't worry about it. You know, that's...
Like I said, I think it was used so infrequently last year, it's almost more of a hassle unlocking it and locking it than...
Should I just leave it, leave it to Sandy's discretion?
There you go.
Or, yeah, ask her about it, you know.
Any mayor council communication?
I know it was brought up last meeting, the audit. The deadline's the end of June, but they plan on coming here on the next meeting, June 11th meeting, so. That's all I have. So you have the heads up.
So moved.
Want to send a adjourn?
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Here.
Thanks for bringing that up, Tony. Next Wednesday, we got the meet and greet 11:00, too.
I didn't see that in your, in your package, so I thought I better throw it in here somewhere.